Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, November 7, 2017. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. It's my honor to deliver tonight's invocation. May we all bow our heads? We are thankful for this day that has been given to us, for its opportunities and its challenges. We are thankful for the diversity of our community, for the wealth of people, cultures, religions, and languages, each adding to the beauty and richness of our city. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen. At this time, we recognize City Clerk Renee Wood.
The Council, it's my responsibility to arrange a review to report conflicts of interest in matters of the courts. At this time, I ask that there be potential conflicts between the two parties.
Before council, our minutes from October 2, 2017, work session, and the October 17, 2017, City Council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Minutes have been approved. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion regarding the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Agenda has been adopted. Following our consent agenda items, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Burlington to enter into an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for fiscal year 1718, Section 5303, planning grant funds. Item B, to approve a notice of intent to adopt a resolution to amend the ground lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC for city-owned real property located at 2748A South Church Street, known as Number Four Fire Station Tower Site. Item C, to approve a notice of intent to adopt a resolution to amend the ground lease agreement for new singular wireless PCS LLC for city-owned real property at 3715A Rural Retreat Road, known as Josie Davidson Tower Park Site. Item D, to approve a notice of intent to adopt a resolution to amend the ground lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC for city-owned real property located at 225 Stone Quarry Road, known as Stone Quarry Road Tower Site. Item E, to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of real property located at 315 West Willowbrook Drive, Burlington, North Carolina, and from General Holdings, Inc., for the purchase price of $125,000 plus closing costs for the public purposes of expanding Willowbrook Park, and to approve budget amendment 2018-17 Willowbrook Park, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Do I hear a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Consent agenda is approved. We have a number of public hearings this evening. Item one, a public hearing has been set to schedule a, or scheduled to consider adopting a resolution to permanently close a portion of Inglewood Drive to its end, and this time council recognizes City Engineer Todd Lambert. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I have two road closures before each night for public hearings. They're identical in nature, but we do have two separate items since they're two separate roads. These closures are at the request of the Burlington School in conjunction with their conditional zoning that was previously approved by council. This only closes the portion of right-of-way that is contained in the Burlington School's property and beyond the gates that are there now. This is not an issue for the City Public Works or other department, as it doesn't change the look, feel, use, or character of the streets that are there. We've posted the intent to close. We've advertised in the paper and sent notices to the adjoining property owners, as required by general statutes. Chad Huffines here is on behalf of the applicant, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council?
I don't have any question about Inglewood and the next one, which I'll give time, but I do wonder about the fact that we have never actually made a plan for the continuation of Rockwood so that something connects back in that area to the Webb Avenue area. Do we have any plans to look at that again?
Are you referring to the Rockwood connector?
So that was part of the spot process. So it is in the state process through the NPO, and so we're, it's currently getting scored with other projects right now, and in the past, it just hasn't scored well enough to get funded at the state level. So, and we have a number of projects like that.
It's been on our list for quite some time. We discuss it at the TAC meetings, but it just doesn't score well enough to merit any state assistance in getting it to the level that it needs to be, but we constantly are lobbying for it.
And you don't have to say something about Rockwood. You knew that.
That's right.
What is it going to take to make it move up a little higher? I mean, I think they have the traffic numbers that run on Webb Avenue and everything down Davis Street that should be able to rank it higher than it's been ranking. And do we even call on our state legislators again? I think we've done that before.
Well, it's, it's pretty prescriptive what the state does with their scoring process.
Yes.
And so what, we tried to get a little greater this time and break the project up to the northern segment and then the southern part, which was the improvements between Alamance and O'Neil. We don't know if that's going to benefit it or not. We were, we're trying to give that a chance to see if that would increase its, its probability of getting funded, but we, we don't really know just yet.
Does the wetland play any part in the way it's being explored?
I guess it would in the fact that it builds into the cost of the project. So there's a benefit cost ratio.
From a financial standpoint.
From a financial standpoint. But not from a, you know, feasibility standpoint. It is doable.
Right.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Public hearing is closed. Any questions, further questions regarding this item, or do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution to approve the closing of the street. Inglewood Drive, yeah. At its end.
All those in favor of the motion to close Inglewood Drive, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is passed. This is to item two. A portion of, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a resolution to permanently close a portion of Greenwood Terrace to its end. This time, we again recognize City Engineer Todd Lambert.
And this is the same exact situation as, as the other side. It's just a portion on the school's property past their gates, so it cleans up their use and cleans up our right-of-way.
Any questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Any further questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution to approve the street closing as requested.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the motion to close Greenwood Terrace, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business tonight. Item three, City Council will consider approving an inter-local government agreement with the Alamance County, with Alamance County to expand sewer service to Burlington-Alamance Regional Airport and approve budget amendment 2018-18 sewer service expansion at Burlington-Alamance Regional Airport project ordinance, details of which are spelled out in your agenda. This time, council recognizes Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of council. A happy election day to you all. And Councilman Butler, I see we're on the same no-shave November train here, so looking pretty snazzy, I must say.
We're law enforcement officers.
Very good. As the mayor mentioned, I'm here to talk about the proposed sewer project that we first discussed with City Council back at an August work session. I have with me as well Dan Danieli, the Executive Director of the Burlington-Alamance Airport Authority. Mr. Danieli made a great presentation last evening to the Alamance County Board of Commissioners at council's direction. If we recall back in that August work session, council directed staff, including the Airport Authority, to request funding assistance from Alamance County, so that there are three partners in this project, the Airport Authority, the City of Burlington, and Alamance County. And last night, they approved that inter-local agreement that you have before you tonight. So, mission accomplished as far as getting an additional partner for the project, and we're very excited to be working with Alamance County on this project. I'll review shortly some of the information about the project itself and the area that is taking place. The development area is on the south side of the airport along Anthony Road, where there currently is not sewer service provided. The sewer service that the city has in this area stops at Cessna Drive in this little industrial area to the south, and we will be extending it, and I'll show in a schematic and drawing a little bit later exactly how we will be doing that. But the intent of this is to encourage additional growth of hangar buildings and to get more based valued aircraft that are taxable assets for the city and for the county. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to work directly with them. Currently, the airport's being served by three different septic tanks and fields, and quite frankly, there's no other area that perks on their property to continue doing septic service, and frankly, that's just a more efficient and costly way to do sewer these days, and we have sewer service in the, in the vicinity. So the airport requested our extension, and then our engineering team put together some information to try and make that happen. Some of the numbers related, and I think this is really impressive and a testament to Dan and his board's work, just the, the increase in the operations that have occurred over at Alamance-Burlington Airport. Seventy-five thousand is a lot for a smaller subregional airport without commercial service, and an operation is a takeoff or a landing. So if you take off and land, that's two operations, not one, just to clarify there. The State, NC State's Department of, or Institute of Transportation Research put together some economic impact analysis a couple of years ago, and as Dan pointed out last night at the, or yesterday morning at the Commissioners Meeting, going from five million and seventy-eight jobs of impact in 1996, all the way up to $114 million of impact and over 700 jobs supported, is really impressive growth. So this is an economic engine for the city and for the county. It's certainly something we want to support and continue supporting. I think it's important to talk about some of that expansion. This project has the possibility to benefit not just the airport, but also five private properties along Anthony Road that will be adjacent to the line construction. It's going to support some additions to hangars that are out there. Currently, LabCorp is working with the Airport Authority to expand their hangar presence. They've purchased additional aircraft that they need to base here, and of course, they're the highest corporate user that we have. Walmart Sheets and some other of our corporate customers have also been heavy users of the airport, and there's a potential for more private folks to develop additional hangar facilities out there. So this project is going to support all those, because in today's world, a hangar no longer is a set of tools and a plane and a couch for the pilot to hang out on. There's a conference room, there's, you know, rec facilities, there's an office in there, possibly multiple offices and employees based in these facilities, because, so these are essentially, you know, business properties, and there are real, real businesses occupying these, and multiple folks using them, and the current septic system was not allowing any expansion to occur. So here is an updated budget estimate. So we see the, the county's $100,000 slotted in. That drops the city commitment to $239,200. The total project's just over $5 billion for this, and here's the schematic as well that shows some of the, the portion that the local governments will be funding, and then a portion that the airport itself will be funding. This will be a gravity line, and it will require us to obtain an easement from a private property owner within the Cessna Drive industrial park.
Peter, just for clarification, the total amount of the project is how much?
And then finally, we always find it's good to draw these back to some of our plans and priorities of council. So in looking at the Destination Burlington Plan, it identifies this area as an area of industrial and economic development growth. It also identifies this area of, of the airport and Anthony Road for future infrastructure investment. We talked at the priority session, the, the goal-setting session of council earlier this year, about working with the airport as projects arose, and this is a project that has arisen and a demand and a need, so trying to directly tie lines to council's previous plans and direction. And then also, this project would support, again, LabCorp, some of the momentum that we have with the Honda Arrow facility and the future MRO facility that'll be out there. So this really just continues our growth opportunities out at the airport. So the inter-local agreement you see before you, as I mentioned, was passed by the Alamance Board of Commissioners yesterday, and then in addition to that, we'll be approving a project ordinance and budget amendment that'll allow us to receive the donated dollars from the Airport Authority and the county, and that also sets up our budget to do this project. I'll take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion from council?
I make a motion that we approve the inter-local agreement and the budget amendment 2018-18 sewer service expansion at Burlington-Alamance Regional Airport project ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor, the motion is stated. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Dan, and a big thank you to our county commissioner for stepping up on this one.
Absolutely. That was a really fine piece of work to get the county involved and get a partnership involved.
It's a tremendous asset.
Good job.
Yeah. Good job.
Item four on our agenda, City Council will consider adopting a resolution approving a grant agreement with Impact Alamance for the construction of the Front Street Greenway and Bike Way project, and approve budget amendment 2018-19 Front Street Greenway and Bike Way project ordinance. Details of this are spelled out in your agenda. This time, council recognizes City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a few remarks just to provide some context, some context and a summary, and then I'm going to call on Tracy Grazer from Impact Alamance to make a few remarks, and then we'll see if council has questions, and then suggest some action. So what you see on your screens is a graphic that represents the project. Let me tell a little bit about the project, and then I can walk through the graphics if needed. Let me give a little bit of history. So we're here this evening to talk about the Front Street Greenway and Bike Way project, which is going to be project one coming out of our Greenways and Bike Ways plan. Greenway and Bike Ways support is referenced in the Destination Burlington Plan, provide some history. It's also included in the city's pedestrian plan. It's also included in the NPO's bicycle map that's been around for quite some time. As Peter referenced, our goal-setting workshop from March of this year, one of the other projects that came out of that goal-setting workshop was Greenway Projects were established as one of the council's top five A initiatives or top priority initiatives for the year, and so we've been marching forward on that, and part of that included, as you all have approved previously, Greenways and Bike Ways plan. That plan was adopted, you all adopted that on September 19th. It's an outstanding plan. It provides a comprehensive strategy and approach that helps improve quality of life across the entire city, and I applaud our consultants for doing such a good job connecting everything. And so here is the first piece to implementing that. So something else that was already in progress as we were working on that plan, and council remembers this from our goal-setting workshop, is we also, in this year's fiscal, fiscal year 1718 budget, also put money aside for what we called our Quick Hitters Greenways and Paths program. That is underway today. It's underway as we speak. That's happening in City Park. It's happening in Fairchild Park and Springwood Park. That's going to add some significant length and some circular routes around each of these well-used city facilities, and the advantage of doing this was to get a quick win and get things on the ground quickly. We don't have to acquire, obviously, we're building in our park, we don't have to acquire additional land. We don't have to build restrooms. We don't have to build parking lots, and that certainly saves on your expenses. To give you a quick progress report on that, we're about 33% with those Quick Hitters projects. Completion of the entire project is anticipated in June 2018, so obviously, at the end of this fiscal year. And there are some sections that are complete that are now usable for our citizens. We're about 75% complete in Fairchild Park, about 30% complete in City Park, and then Springwood will be the, the project that we start once the weather winds back up, assuming the asphalt plants don't open over the winter. So that's kind of where we stand, and that's a little history, making great progress. And so the good news to report this evening is thanks to the generosity and visionary thinking of Impact Alamance. They graciously have reached out to assist with funding for the city's first freestanding greenway, so a greenway that stands by itself outside of a park. It's kick-starting our program of greenways and bikeways as we laid out in our September plan, and we're thrilled that they're interested in doing that, and that we've found a way to partner with them to do so. They selected the Front Street Greenway and Bike Way as the first one to jump in on. They've agreed to contribute $300,000 towards the anticipated $400,000 cost of that project, and we are thrilled, again, about that partnership, and I'm going to yield to Tracy in just a moment and let her share some comments and thoughts about the project. But we do want to thank them for their support and thank them for believing in our mission. And again, as I said, we're going to be able to do this, and if you look back to the timetables we provided after the goal-setting workshop, this is going to put us way ahead of the original timetable we thought, in which we would have our first greenway underway. As I mentioned, the total project cost is $400,000, so there's an additional $100,000 that's needed. We have three partners in addition to Impact Alamance to help with that $100,000 portion, so the city will take a portion of that, and we've got, we anticipate partnership commitments from Elon University, Talent Elon, and LabCorp. And if you look at the graphic here, you see why we're including those folks. Borrow the mouse. So if you, if you see, this begins at the Elon Intermural Fields here, where the arrow is, where there's currently a sidewalk that goes on into the town of Elon. And so the, the project would begin there at the intermural fields, and Elon University at some point would figure out if they want to, you know, move, move these trail onto their intermural fields for their use in the future. Sorry about that. 10% of the project total is in Elon Town Limits. This is the city limit line between Burlington and Elon, and so about 10%. And so Elon has initially given some verbal indication that that seems fair to them, that they would pick up about 10% of the remaining $100,000. Still to be worked out all the details on that. So the, the Greenway project would come down this side of Front Street, crosses here at Saddle Club, and then we work all the way down this with a lot of LabCorp right-of-way along the, this frontage, and then when we get to Briar Cliff, we'll cross the street and go down Briar Cliff just for a moment, and then it'll turn and go down Canterbury, and then a future project would pick up on Canterbury. If you, those of you who are familiar with that street, it's wide, very little traffic on there, and it's currently used. Canterbury and Woodland, which Canterbury leads you into Woodland, are already used by cyclists and walkers and runners on a regular basis. It's wide, and we'll end up with a striping project on Canterbury and Woodland as a future phase that ultimately carries folks on into Davis Street and then carries them into downtown. That's sort of the long-term vision. This section, as I said, terminates at Canterbury and Briar Cliff. So city, like I said, we've worked with our three additional partners. We're pleased and encouraged by their interest and willingness to partner with, partner on this effort. The city will take, City Burlington will take responsibility for implementing the project, managing the project, conducting the design work, getting the easements and right-of-way, taking care of the bidding and the construction management, and then, and then, like I said, our partners will be chipping in along the way. Let me show you a couple more graphics that'll help. If you do look at this, this is what our, if you, if you remember, our consultants from Alta talked about side paths, and so if you look at where the arrow is here, this is what it's going to look like, sort of graphically. It'll be a path along the side of the road. You see these two graphics giving you some sense. So you'll be clearly off the road. The intent is someone could go out with their children on bicycles and feel comfortable. As we know, you have to be a very experienced cyclist to feel comfortable riding mixed in with traffic. There's a couple other graphics that help show that as well. This is, again, prepared by our friends at Alta that did our plan for us, and you get a sense of what the, currently what it looks like there in front of the LabCorp property, and this is what the side path may look like in the future with some plantings to kind of break up the area. Again, there's another graphic of the sort of side path off the road, and then finally, that's our overall graphic. So at this point, I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Tracy Grazer from Impact Alamance. Let her share a few words, and then we'll see if council has questions.
Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. We're extremely excited about this partnership and about this project and the comprehensiveness of it in the community, and we know that this is just the first phase. So as many of you know through our previous partnerships, that Impact Alamance focuses heavily, and we believe strongly in building healthy communities, and we really feel like this investment in particular is one of the most impactful things that you could do to improve the overall health of your community, and something that we can partner on to help achieve our vision of making Alamance County the best place to live and thrive. So we've already mentioned that we're willing to invest the $300,000 in the first phase of this project, and we're, we're very excited about the possibility of partnering, partnering with you on it, should you approve that this evening. So when we talk about building healthy environments, which is really what this is about in our built environment work, it's making the healthy choice the easy choice, and I heard recently, it's not just the easy choice, it's the undeniable choice. And when you talk about greenways, you're talking about things that create active transportation, bike lanes, bike paths, sidewalks, all of the things that are included in a greenways. And the, the way that that contributes to a healthy community, and all of the research shows that you're not forcing anyone to make healthy choices. It's readily accessible to them. So if it's a way for people to have that access, then they're going out and they're leading healthier lives, they're making healthier choices, and therefore, you have a healthier community. So we feel that this is in, in, just a crucial part of not only improving the health of our community, but also improving the quality of life for the citizens that, that you all represent. And I just want to take a moment to thank you all and to thank you for investing in this type of plan and having the foresight to invest in the health and the quality of life of your community, and so thank you for that, and we look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from council regarding this proposal?
It's just wonderful that Impact Alamance, the effect that you've had on this community with your own vision and your willingness to step up front and take some lead on it is very much appreciated by us, and I think this is exciting that we have approved something and we just get started on it right of way. So we're very grateful to you.
Welcome.
We're going to have to lower the speed limit in the front street.
I believe it's 35 now, so I don't know of any plans. We don't know of any plans the DOT has to reduce the speed limit.
I think maybe, I think it would be wise if we put like a traffic thing up there just to monitor for a while, see what the, because we all know what the speed limit is, but.
Actual speeds.
That's the speed, yeah, is something that we need to look at.
Yeah, we certainly can collect some data on that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
And the other thing too is, are you going to put it on the north side of the front? The south side?
We're going to be on both. You want to take that?
Sure. Primarily, if you look at the map, it's on the north side from Briar Cliff down to Saddle Club, and then it crosses.
Crosses over.
And then it's on the south side going into Elon. And primarily, the big reason there, I mean, you know, you'd love to have it on the south side, but there's a lot of properties that'll be impacted, and we have willing partners on the north side to help us, so.
But thank you, Tracy, but I, I still, that speed limit sort of worries me a little bit there, because they, just like I say, we know what the speed limit is there, but what they actually drive is, and I want people on bikes to be safe.
Yes, and fortunately for, you know, for this project, this multi-use path, greenway path, is separate from the roadway, so that does give some level of security and, and comfort for people. They feel a lot safer using it as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got a question regarding the yellow segmented portion at Briar Cliff. Is that intended to be on-street shared lane, or will that be dedicated? I know it's a fairly busy intersection, especially during commuting times from App Course Campus.
You're talking about down this end?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, it's not an off-street. If you look at the bottom, it's more along the neighborhood bike path scenario where you would have a sidewalk and possibly some striping for the, for the bicycle traffic.
Okay, but we would have a sidewalk there, where there, there's not currently a sidewalk.
That is part, that is part of the plan and just all that, so.
Fantastic. Okay. That'll help that intersection quite a bit.
Yeah.
Other questions from council?
Do I hear a motion?
I'd love to approve it.
Second. Any questions regarding the argument, or motion approved? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before council, a number of boards from the Commission's reports. First off, Planning and Zoning Commission has two rezoning requests and consistency statements. This time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. For our meeting that we held in October, we went over the consistency statements, just as I did with, with all of you whenever it was planning and zoning, so that they would understand, because they also have to deal with these. because they also have to deal with these. And then we went into two rezonings, and I will pull these up pretty quickly. The first one is called The Stables at Harris Farm, and it is a request for townhomes, 42 townhome units for this site. The driveway access would be here, actually, street access. And the homes are located within this parcel. And here is a layout of those, and I believe you have a copy of those already. And we heard the developer speak, and then we had multiple people from the surrounding neighborhoods speak. And the primary concern that people had was with traffic. There's concerns about the traffic on 62 already being too numerous and too fast. So like I said, that was the number one concern. There's already multifamily uses that are in the vicinity around this parcel. However, they were concerned about adding additional traffic. And when we looked at that through our technical review process, it was not warranted to add any additional lanes for this particular development.
Lanes on Alamance?
Right, on 62. They do need to provide a site easement right along here to help people to be able to see better coming and going. The second issue that we had was Calamar Enterprises, and it's on Old St. Mark's Church Road. And they are requesting to build senior apartments. And it was determined that that would be a good use of the property. And I neglected to tell you, the other one did pass 4 to 3. This one passed unanimously. And it's kinda hard to see, let me see if I can blow this up a little bit. So you can have a look. That gives you a general idea of what it is going to look like. It's an H-frame type layout with lots of parking. They are asking for a reduction in the parking considering that it is an elder community that is proposed here. They're gonna have 138 units, 47 one-bedroom units, and 91 two-bedroom units. It's a good location. There are multifamily uses around it already. It is near shopping and restaurants. It is also close to the hospital. And those are all requirements that they have, that the developer has for these types of units, which they have done in the past.
Any questions from council regarding these items?
Do we actually know whether people 62 and over have less cars than people under 62? I hear this come up a lot, and I'm just curious if we have.
Well, I don't know that there's particular data. I'm sure they have some that they use because they have other facilities like this. As you can see, several of them are one-bedroom units, so they are supposing that there are fewer vehicles. They swear by this with their research, but we can ask them about that at the, at the public hearing. I will make a note of that.
Does that conclude Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Traffic Commission, we have five recommendations. At this time, council recognizes City Traffic and Engineering, Jason Geary.
Thank you, mayor and council. These are the recommendations from last month's Traffic Commission meeting. I'll walk you through them pretty fast because they're somewhat simple, but if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask. The first one was to extend a no-parking area on Kitchen Street. It was requested by the property owner at the corner here, which is State Farm Insurance. So it was having trouble with the, her clients pulling in and out of the driveway. People parking there, it helps for sight distance, it doesn't affect anybody but her. So we, the commission didn't see that as a problem, so they voted to approve that. The second one is a Parks and Rec request. This is over near City Park and off of Overbrook. It was for a mid-block crossing. It's actually for a speed table here. And part of that was contingent, and this is a continuation of part of the rail, trail system that Harden was speaking of earlier. And part of this was, it is a mid-block crossing because in conjunction with this, engineering is working on a design for, to make this intersection more of a T-intersection. Basically gets rid of this slip-right, which makes it safer for pedestrians to cross in this area. So with those things in mind, the commission also voted to approve this one as well, so. And our next item was on the other side of town, near the baseball stadium in Fairchild Park. It was a request, this also came through Parks and Rec as well, it's in conjunction with the next item I'll show you. It's to reduce the speed limit from 35 to 25 from, on Graham Street from Beaumont Avenue to Hanover Road. And the necessity for that is you have these back-to-back curves, which in itself is a little dangerous. And then also, you get more pedestrian traffic between the stadium and Fairchild Park and that kinda thing, so. The commission also voted to recommend making this adjustment as well. And the second half of that, of course, is a mid-block crossing on Graham Street. And part of the consideration for that was to provide a trail system from Fairchild Park, a sidewalk system that would cross at this approximate location that connected the baseball stadium. In conjunction with lowering the speed limit, as you see here, it gives us a little better sightlines, makes the sightlines shorter, so obviously, people coming around the curves can see somebody crosses. So that's why those kinda work together, the approval of the crossing as well as the reduction of the speed limit. And then finally, the last one was just basic stop sign installation at a T-intersection. This was requested by the police department because they've had some, had a rec here recently, and they've had some near misses. It's not a sign intersection, it's a T-intersection, so it's basically just to establish right away. And that was also approved by the commission as well, so. That was all the recommendations the commission had. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council? Thank you. There were no public?
Could you go back to the kitchen, to the crosswalk?
This one here.
Tell me what you said here about the turn on the corner.
Let me, I'll show you. This is engineering's drawing that they're actually working on now. Currently, as you can see, this right turn lane, it comes through here, and people are coming through there, and you come through pretty fast. Once we, once we correct this curve, make it more of a 90-degree perpendicular intersection, somebody's gonna have to actually slow down and make that turn, and they'll be able to have some good sight distance on people crossing. Otherwise, we were concerned, coming around the curve fast, you wouldn't see somebody crossing, that makes for a dangerous situation. Done. Any other questions?
Will there still be parking along those edges there for festivals?
Are you talking about Overbrook itself?
On Overbrook, but also in Kitchen.
There will be. We're actually not, we were not eliminating any parking, we're actually adding more curb. Because as you can see, this is, we're getting rid of this right turn lane as well, make it more of a 90-degree. So this will all be curb as well, so.
Awesome.
And then also in Overbrook, we're only losing a couple of spots. We modified this slightly to make this more symmetric with the cross streets. I think it was two or three spots we're losing. And that's, it's also for safety for the crossing, so.
Yeah, excellent. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Transit Advisory Commission, the PTAC, did not have any additional announcements. There were no public comments requested for this evening? Were there any city council comments?
Okay. Two. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say that people at this table who put themselves in front of the public today should really be honored because, for all of us, because it's an amazingly hard thing to do, to run for office. And people were standing out in the rain, and you had volunteers working for you. And I just think that we, that you're worthy of praise just for doing what you did.
Correct.
He's gonna get his handkerchief out to cry. I just, I was amazed watching people standing there in a lot, it was a Seattle kinda rain, just lots of mist all day long. So my hats are off to you. Thank you.
And I would say to Chief Verdict, for the commendations, the police department got the men and women, for the officers that are promoted, great job. And also, I'd like to say my congratulations to Captain Brent Carey. If you lived in Burlington family at the time, you know that years ago, we only had a person of color as a lieutenant, his name was Odell Isley, years ago. And to have a person of color come up to be the first captain in our police department shows that our city is moving forward. And I'm most appreciative of you guys picking these officers out to promote and, you know, yeah, they did the work, definitely did the work. But I wanna thank you guys for seeing that these guys did the work and are able to be promoted and make our police department better than it ever's been. So thank you to the police department.
A couple announcements. Councilmember Butler reminded me that we had our fire department color guard at the Panthers game this weekend, which was a tremendous honor, and they did a phenomenal job out there. Saw a lot of good social media, a lot of folks appreciated that, so some good publicity for Burlington, and we've got folks that we're very proud of out there. This is an election day, we appreciate everyone who worked hard, continuing to preserve the democracy in our community. As some of you might have seen in the paper, our LED streetlight conversion starts tomorrow, which is exciting. It's been a lot of hard work from engineering folks, and we're excited to see those bright new LED lights popping up all across our community, providing better light and better safety for neighborhoods all across Burlington. Please be mindful of the construction crews and give Duke Energy their way, right of way as they're making those improvements. The first No-Frills 5K kicks off for the season, our Mustache Dash over at Lake Macintosh, at the Guilford-Macintosh Marina at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday morning. Great way to get active and explore our trail system out there. And then our animal shelter is participating in a Home for the Holidays special pet adoption event, 12/25, just to adopt a cat or a dog and help them have a home for the holidays. So great opportunity there. And then our 71st Annual Christmas Parade is happening on November 18th, 10:00 a.m. in downtown Burlington. So we look forward to that as well. Now, any other announcements from council?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, council is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.